Hi. I don't have any idea who that is. Yeah, I got it. I think I can tell way to the Pini Tech has gotta be somebody. What time is it really? Yeah, I think it's six o'clock. Is that six o'clock? All right, Mr. Danny over here. I think so. All right. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm gonna call the continued meeting of the Rappahannock Planning Commission that was recessed on November 18, 2020 back to order. And so we've already adopted the agenda, said the pledge of allegiance, had public comment, and we're up to report. Well, I guess we should just note for the record that all the members of the commission are here, so we have a quorum, and then some. And I hope you all had a nice holiday, ladies and gentlemen. All right, we're up to old business, report on the comprehensive plan, R. Fraser. Go take it away.
What's that going there?
What? You wanna continue that till the next meeting?
Yeah, we probably could. Mr. Whitson has found a few typos that he's working on in the in the draft, comprehensive planning that the board is considering for adoption. And that's about, I guess, the gist of what we are.
What?
That's probably the gist of what we are.
What about the math thing? I mean, I guess, I mean, I think, I assume that everyone is aware that...
The last section the board took on the map was that we would probably adopt it with just the commercial district map.
But the other maps that we put in, like the historic district and the scenic byways, those are gonna stay in, right? Just the village maps they decided to delete, correct?
I don't know that we actually, but that should be correct, but I don't think we actually discussed that. We just had the commercial.
Okay. And what is the plan for the maps? Are we, is that something that's being sent back to the commission to discuss further? Or they're just not gonna do it, and then they're just not gonna do it?
I guess the plan is, the stated plan is that we'll work on it later, but you know how things happen in Rappahannock.
Later?
Yeah.
Just later?
Later.
Okay, well, maybe you could clarify that at the December meeting, what they mean? I mean, if we're supposed to put it back on our agenda, or our work plan, and revisit the topic, and try to come up with better maps, or work with Mr. Curry, I know he had some ideas and some alternate maps.
I can't speak for the board, but I think my personal observation is there's a lot of people that don't understand what the maps are for, and I think there needs to be sort of a re-education meeting or something, because we've, you know, there's just been so much hysteria, so much conflicting information that's been out there. I mean, it appears, from what I understand, a newspaper even has problems with this 25-acre density, they keep referring to it as a 25-acre lot size. So there's just a lot of people that don't understand everything that we're trying to do, or everything that we're working with.
Right.
So somehow we've gotta get rid of the false and the misinformation that has been circulating in this county for 30 years.
Well, I'm somewhat of a loss to, but I'm glad to hear from the rest of the commission, because I kinda feel like, using another one of my Yogi Berra quotes, which is, if people don't wanna come down to the ballpark and watch the game, nobody's gonna make them stay at home. If people don't come to the commission meetings and listen to our work sessions and discussions like this, and so forth.
Yeah, they can stay home.
Yeah, right, you can't. So I, I mean, that would be, to me, the best way to get educated, or at least better educated, or know, have some understanding of how we got to where we got to and why. But, if anybody else, anybody else wanna discuss that? Good. Okay, thank you, Mr. Fraser, but maybe you can clarify in time for, time for item three, what later means. All right. Item two is the review. Again, I thought we had done this, but Mr. Curry, and I wanna commend him for being so meticulous, found some items that were either unclear, or hadn't been fully dealt with, or maybe we thought we dealt with them, but actually we didn't, we didn't get them fully resolved, so I appreciate his checking over things. So has everybody got this 32-page document? I propose that we just go through it. And Mr. Curry is here, thank you for coming, and then we can, we can discuss anything that needs to be discussed, or just clarified. Is that all right with everybody? Do you still have to get out of here by some certain time?
No, I'm not.
Oh, we can stay till 11 o'clock again, great.
Can't wait.
I'll talk slower. All right, the first thing that I see, and Mr. Curry, you're here, and so if I skip anything, or miss anything, please feel free to jump right in and correct me, or any of the rest of you, is the addition of dwelling unit accessory. That's, that's in the ad, I guess. So I don't have a problem with that at all, I think that's a good change.
Well, I would suggest you go through the ordinance and then reconcile.
Okay, and then do this last, all right, fine. All right, well then let's take off page one, which is the ad, or the notice. All right, so the first thing is, I guess I'm a little foggy on what the first thing in the right-hand column, CA1 only if special conditions are added. And I just wanna say, I think, when I saw this, Mr. Curry, when you, I think you missed that meeting, we did discuss it, and I had actually written up a draft, I think, with some proposed special conditions for the meatpacking, or processing, whatever, food processing, so forth. And after we discussed it and went over it, it wasn't only the consensus, I think everybody agreed that the general terms and conditions were adequate to give the board of supervisors whatever they needed to deal with that, so we didn't have any. And it wasn't by accident, or oversight, it was on purpose. But if you have some comment on it, and we're happy to hear it.
Mr. Chairman, what order are we doing? Because I'm looking at the first page, the first thing I see is the adapted use question, so I'm not sure where...
I don't know, I'm on this...
This is the, we're looking at the...
I'm on this, an ordinance of the board of supervisors of Rappahannock County, blah, blah, blah. And whereas...
The first thing is...
Oh, maybe that's the same first page I'm doing.
Yeah, you're looking at the resolution, I thought we were gonna go through the 32-page markup of the...
I thought I was doing that, but apparently I don't know.
The 32-page markup has, it goes in the order of the chapter.
Okay.
It's got the chapter 170 zoning on the front, is that not what we wanna be?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, well, I was looking at this first page that's on here, what Michelle handed out, so that starts out with an ordinance, and so forth and so on at the top. All right, so where are you at? Chapter 170 zoning?
Yeah, that's the first page of the 32 pager, I think.
All right. Adaptive use. Why does this not match the decision definition? Well, I think I addressed that in some email, I think it doesn't address, or it doesn't match it, because that's, they sent it back, and the board wanted the planning commission, actually, maybe Mr. Light should answer, but in my recollection, as I was here, I know, and they went over it, and they decided they didn't wanna, well, whatever the language that's here is what they wanted to do. And that's, that was, at the time, the recommendation of the planning commission, and we just kinda readopted it without too much fanfare, but is that pretty close to right, Mr. Light?
I don't remember any of that, frankly.
That's what we came up with, yes, sir. I was on the planning commission at that time, Mr. Light and Mr. Henry were on there, and I think everyone else has came on since that time.
The changes are obviously to the definition, but also to 17069, that includes a pretty busted list of requirements, and by and large, it's, the change is remove residential from the opportunity for adaptive use. That was specifically included, and will be sent out forward. And maybe there was some discussion why...
Oh yeah, there was a long discussion about that.
What was written, was written by Mr. Luke, and he had no input from the board when he wrote it, nor from his planning commission, and this is what the planning commission recommended to, recommended to the board for approval. That's what you have, have...
I'd never have understood how we're suddenly taking adaptive use away from previously residential buildings, that was the intent originally, you've got a bunch of these big structures that are being used for something else. I've never understood it, I didn't understand it then, we discussed it, I didn't understand it in the discussion, I don't understand it now, and I don't agree with it now. I don't know why we would suddenly say, once a residence, the only thing it could ever be used for is a residence. I mean, you look at things like the Avon Hall, that was a residence, it's not really a functional residence, it needs to be used for something else. So if we're here talking about it, and we're going with our recommendation, the fact that maybe another commission talked about it four years ago should not prevent us from doing what we think is right.
Well, if I could, Mr. Chairman, the adaptive use, or adaptive reuse, however you wanna phrase it, the reason that we struck residential is because if somebody comes in with a special use permit or special exception, then that would cover the conversion of a residence to some other use. Adaptive reuse normally would be for the country stores, or a packing shed, or something to that effect, so...
How so? Because it seems like now the only bed and breakfast you could have is if you built it new. I mean, I don't, I don't understand mechanically how this is supposed to work, because it's...
I just said what I said, you didn't understand what I said?
No, I guess I didn't.
All right, come on now.
If it's a residential use, and somebody applies for a special use permit, or a special exception permit for one of those uses, like a bed and breakfast, or a tourist home, or some other use similar to that, it's already covered by a section of the zoning ordinance.
But if it's a, but, so residential use as, is what, listed in the categories of uses, is that, is that the distinction that I'm missing?
A residential use is normally an accepted use in a residential district. I don't know why you'd have to have an adaptive reuse to do something that you're already entitled to do.
Well, this might be taking a formal packing shed and wanting it to be residential.
Well, that would be okay.
That would be an adaptive reuse, if you, if a large packing shed would, trying to convert it into like multifamily.
Well, and I'm not sure, the reasoning the ordinance has put forward, whether that would be allowed, to take a residential use and adaptively reuse it as a residential, if residential is never removed.
Now, the way, well, maybe, maybe it's...
And if you look at the zoning district, under commercial, retail, and business uses, tourist home and bed and breakfast is there, it's not under a residential use, so it seems to me that what we're saying is, I mean, we've, it's not clear what we're saying, maybe that's not what we mean to say, but if you just read this the way it is, it seems to say, once a residence can only be used for residential uses, and you go look at what residential uses are, and tourist home and bed and breakfast isn't one of them.
It doesn't say that.
I, I'm just looking at, forget the history of it, read the ordinance.
What are you looking at, so that everybody can...
We're looking at the definition on the first page. We better speed it up, because we're not gonna get out of here till 11 o'clock, it's the rate we're going.
So it's an existing structure to be used for purposes not allowed by the structure's current zoning, so I've got a residence, and I wanna come in for...
All right, let's get to that when we get up to 69B. The definition doesn't say anything about any of that, it just says, existing structure for purposes not allowed by the structure's current zoning, period. We're taking out the 1940 business.
But later on, it says...
All right, later on, when we get to that, we'll get to it, all right? Okay, everybody okay with that?
I mean, I don't know if I'm okay with it, because I, also, when I read this, I, not having been on it before, I, I don't actually understand all the reasons behind it, so if somebody, if you wanna walk through it, that would be very helpful.
You mean, walk through the whole purpose of this provision?
See, y'all, y'all are trying to, I don't know where y'all are trying to go with this, but it says that it's not currently allowed, but, I mean, it's not allowed by the structure's current zoning, there's no place in this county where a residence would not be allowed in this current zoning, is it?
No, that's not what it's saying, though, it's saying...
That's what it says!
It says that, it's not allowed by the structure's current zoning, but actually, structures aren't zoning, I mean, aren't zoned.
But the zone that it's in, that structure, the zone that it's in, where in this county would it not be allowed to continue as a residence?
That's not what, that's not what I'm saying, it's, it's to change from residential use to something else.
It doesn't, this doesn't preclude that.
I don't see how it doesn't. That's what I'm, because, because, because there's RR, because there could, you can do it as a special permit.
Mm-hmm, right. Because you'd have to get a special permit anyway. If you had, like, take a bed, every bed and breakfast, just a valid, take, take the first one, what do you call it? Conyers' house, that was a residence, if they apply, or she applied, for a special use permit to have a bed and breakfast there, and convert the single-family residence into a bed and breakfast, and it was granted, and then Phil Irwin came along and did the same thing, and numerous, numerous other people did. Almost everybody that gets a bed and breakfast, or one of these tourist homes, so-called, is converting, I mean, that's my kind of beef with the definitions until now, is that they're, that they're converting what is a residential use, exactly like you said, to something that's listed under commercial uses, and that violates the spirit and intent of the plan, and so forth, and the property zoning ordinance too, but anyway, it just...
So what, what is this changing, then, if it's not, I mean...
It's taken the part about 1940 out, because there was no rationale, nobody could figure out what was the rational basis.
Okay, I understand the 1940 part, I don't understand throughout these changes, it's here...
Like, what if you did, what if your structure was built in 1942, why would that make a difference?
Okay, I understand that.
Maybe it would back then, at some point, but now, what's make a difference?
We can revisit it later, but my point is, three different places, or two different places in addition to this, it says adaptive use shall not apply to residential structures, and I don't, I don't understand what we're trying to do with that.
Let's discuss that, let's get through some and some.
I think the adaptive reuse has really been applied one time in Rappahannock County, and that was Dan Clark's Foster Packing Shed. And that was a pre-1940 building, Apple Store shed, that had kinda become vacant, obsolete, no use, and Dan came in with an adaptive reuse, and that was really the first time that verbiage was used upon the board ever. And I guess, the only other time since then it's been used, has been on the FT Valley store, we talked about an adaptive reuse some there. And the whole intent of it, I think, was to take a building, whether it's Dan Clark's building, or whether it's the mill out here next close to the library, to take a building that has kinda become a gray area, and make it usable for, for something in today's world, simple as that. And that was how we applied it.
Well, I think it also applied to, like, the concert hall that was a chicken coop, I mean, I think it's been used for other things, but I'm not questioning the intent, I'm questioning the implications of the words that we've put here.
Okay, let's deal with it when we get to the residential part, because I agree with what Mr. Henry said, and the fact of the matter is, that it, that, it's not like residences have gone out of style, like the packing shed did, or like the mill did, it's not a mill, they can't be used for a mill anymore, because nobody, maybe in another five years that we keep on going the way we're going, or 10 years, maybe there will be a need for a local mill. But right now, the mill is obsolete, the use for which it was built, and the design of it, and so forth and so on, is totally, makes it, makes it a big white elephant. Same as the packing shed up there, same as where, down here, this packing shed, catty corner from the courthouse, that used, used to be my office. It was, its original intended purpose has become obsolete, but the building is there, could be used for something, as an adaptive reuse of the building. But you can't say that about a residence, and I think that's, I'm not arguing one point or the other, I'm just saying a residence is different, a residence is a residence. You can remodel it, you can this, you can that, and what they did, I think what the intent was, was not to have people come and get, abuse this provision as a way to circumvent the ordinance by taking a residence and turning it into some other commercial use. Like, not, that wasn't even related, not like a hotel or a commercial use. That's related to sort of short-term residence, or long-term, or permanent, but I mean, turn it into, you know, a store.
So we could go back and talk about Dan's office, and he could've gotten a permit, a building permit, to make a residential use of that building, by right.
Right.
By right.
Yep.
He didn't have to go for an adaptive.
I'm not questioning the intended use, I'm questioning the unintended consequences of how we've worded this, but it sounds like Mr. Conick doesn't think it's unintended consequence, he does wanna make, say, once it's a residence, always a residence, which is completely opposite.
Well, always a residence or some other permitted use.
Because once you get into this adaptive reuse, it's not limited.
What, what, I think, this adaptive reuse was not meant to take an existing residential unit that had its purpose and vitality and a use, to then change it into office space in Agaria.
Right.
It's meant to take a property that no longer has a use, to make it usable. So I think a residential use always has a use, I mean, that's not...
Well, let's look at Avon Hall.
Avon? That's in the town.
That's in the town.
It doesn't matter, it's, all right.
And, so let's look at it, and do what, they're making it into a residence, aren't they?
Is it only going to be a residence? I thought they were talking about some other purposes there.
Well, if Avon Hall was in the county, it would not be obsolete. It would just be a big house. I mean, Avon Hall is not that big of a house, it's smaller than your house, Gary, is your house obsolete? Your house is bigger than Avon Hall, probably by 100%. Your house is probably twice as big as Avon Hall. You might have one of the top 10 biggest houses over, before 1940 in the county, so is your house obsolete? You live there with your family, it functions, is your house obsolete?
It could be.
Is it, yes or no, you lived there?
Well, obviously, I lived there. This isn't about my house, this is about what are we trying to do with this, we can come back to it.
We're, we're trying to make, keep you from making your house into an office building.
Well, that does seem like what you're doing, but, you know, and my point is, is that what we're trying to do here? Because I thought this was all about the store, and doing all the intended purposes that you are talking about, and it's the unintended purpose that is concerning me. And that's always the problem, it's never, you know, you change something to get something else done, it's not, that's not the problem, it's what you accidentally do, because the way you did something, that's the problem.
And there's the, I got news for you, the zoning ordinance is chock-a-block full of other things, way worse than this.
Well, we'll see.
Can I just ask, only because I'm really truly ignorant on this, so I don't have a position, because I don't know what it should be, but it, so if that's true for residents, why wouldn't that be true for non-residents? Why, why the distinction?
The distinction is because most of the, I mean, I, I'm not advocating, I'm just explaining my understanding of why they did what they did, because I wasn't on the commission at the time, because most of the buildings that fall into the category, like we just said, are like old mills, old packing sheds, the, look at where the dress factory was, up in Flynn Hill, the, what do you call it? Eileen Plains. There's a, there's a place that has, in fact, sort of had an adaptive reuse, because it's not a dress factory anymore.
To address something that just happened in the county, the church down there on 729, going from Benvenue to Flynn Hill, the church here, what was it called?
Battle Run.
Battle Run, primitive, Baptist Church, whatever. And that property came up for sale, it was sold for basically $150,000. The people went in, it was a church, and they got a building permit, they didn't have to come in for any special zoning permit, and they turned it into a residential unit and sold it. And, you know, that was an adaptive reuse, but it already had a zoning of a residential as a by-right use, so it was no need to come to us, and under this, it would've been, they could've done the same thing, no need to come to us, we're gonna permit to do anything.
So, right, it only applies to places that, that because of the zoning category that they're in, that they don't have any, they're not grandfathered, because it's been, it's obsolete, so it's probably been in disuse for more than two years, so it can't be grandfathered, so they're stuck. It's too big to use for anything but some other purpose that used to be allowed there, but isn't allowed now, and, and the commission, in its wisdom or lack thereof, decided to limit it pretty much to commercial-type buildings, and not residential buildings, for the very reason that's been stated, because that's a use by right in every district except commercial. But if it wasn't a commercial district, they wouldn't have a problem if they wanna change the commercial use of it.
Well, the way you're explaining it, it sounds like a question that we have written before.
I'd say, excuse me, question. The owner could always come in, if it's a large house, and they could get a permit for a B&amp;B, or, or tourist homes, or whatever it is that they're wanting to do there, that's still in the ordinance. This is just, basically, for the dormant buildings that are being, that are going to waste in the county.
Well, I would totally agree with that.
I mean, this is supposed to be a very limited, like, exception to the general rules, that if you have, I mean, like, take the Laurel Mills store, or not the Laurel Mills store, the Laurel Mills mill, which doesn't even have a roof, but it's still got walls, if somebody wanted to come in, it's like this mill up here, and there's the mill that's very good. What if somebody wanted to come in and turn the mill, put a roof on it, fix it up, and turn it into, you know, the Laurel Mills antique shopping mall? Well, right now, they couldn't do that, because it's not zoned, it's zoned agriculture, or floodplain, or whatever. They could come in under this, and if they meet the criteria, and the board decides to do it, and give them that exception, basically, they could do it.
But wasn't that...
I mean, in a way, you know, in a way, what this provision is, if you know the law of variances, which we don't deal with much in the planning commission, but the BZA does, you can't give somebody a variance for a use, you can give them a variance for setbacks, and so forth and so on, but if they wanna use a building for a use, they can't, they can't get it for it, because they can't meet the one criteria, which is that it's not such, it's not the kind of a situation that couldn't be cured by an amendment to the, to the zoning ordinance, so that everybody in that district could do the same thing. Well, you don't wanna have that. And this is sort of a modified, limited variance for uses that otherwise just wouldn't be allowed, and thus, the mill at Laurel Mills continues to deteriorate, and so forth and so on.
By not allowed, that means it's, there's no, you could, not by special permit, not by any means, there's a, there's a blank in the table, or the use isn't on the table, that's what that means.
Right. Or there's no, there's no practical use, like, what are you gonna do with the Laurel Mills mill? The Woolen Mill, what, if you bought that property, and so, first of all, it's in a floodplain, second, so you're right away in trouble. And we're getting ready to amend that map, so it's even gonna be in more trouble, I think, they're gonna be underwater, anyway. What, but, okay, what could you do with it? Well, maybe you could turn it into a yacht club. You can't do that right now, because it's not allowed, but under this, it's sort of a release valve, or a, some way to allow buildings that already exist to be used, and not, plus, we gotta tax, there's tax implications of it, that if the building, maybe they're gonna tear it down, and then we lose the tax revenue from having that improvement. So it's a way of a sort of giving somebody a variance for a use, as opposed to a setback, or height limitation, or something like that, lot size, whatever it might be. That's what it's supposed to be, and therefore, it's supposed to be very, very limited in its scope. Maybe you're, I guess what you're saying is, it's too limited.
I find it odd, because its original purpose was the use of a dwelling, or some other building, for something else, and now we're saying it's good for anything but a dwelling, so it seems like it, we're, we're, it's, again, it's not, I understand all the cases that you're describing, but I, I feel like there are potential unintended consequences of the restrictions on residents to be adapted.
Well, as Hal said, it came up one time in 30 years, so...
Mr. Chairman, if the commissioners could just tell us what their fears are, maybe we could address that, instead of us going down all these different revenue thresholds.
Well, you know, it's basically two different opinions, you know, one opinion is, is that this doesn't conclude a residential use, and the other opinion is that it does, and I guess the board of supervisors' opinion is that it does, because that's why they marked it, right?
No, the board of supervisors had nothing to do with this, Peter Luke wrote it.
Not on his own.
But I thought we were talking about this tonight, because...
The supervisor sent it to the planning commission, but Peter Luke wrote it with absolutely no involvement by a majority of the board that I know of.
This is a resolution of the board.
I know it's a resolution of the board, but the board at that time...
He wrote that, too.
Yeah.
Well, it's spoken on, despite nothing, including yourself forward to the dawn. But maybe I can pull this together and remove it. This provides one extra use in the use table or expands it. If you can't find any other use in one seventy thirty-six to do what you want, then you can pick the other door. Adaptive use of an existing building and say, well, I'm going to do what I want to do in that building, even though it's not allowed there, I'm going to do it and I'll follow the special rules.
That's what everybody does anyway.
In this section. And by taking our residential, if in one seventy thirty-six A, there are certain, very few, and you're right, there are very few areas where you can't do a certain kind of residential, R five, you can't do multifamily, period. Can't do it. And so if you don't have residential and somebody had a whiz-bang idea to do a residential in an old packing shed, it happens to be an R five, you cannot use this ordinance to do it, not allowed. And that's okay. That's where the, my goal was to say, planning commission, why is it that what you put together is different than what the board sent to you? And you've talked about that, and I don't think any of you really know why it's there.
If I could disagree-
That's not what it does.
But it doesn't, it's not going to be unintended consequences because it's broadening what is allowed to do otherwise.
Actually, I think you have it backwards.
You have it backwards.
Excuse me, sir. Actually, I believe you got it a little bit backwards. That's not what our intent was. The intent was not to take an existing residential use. You could take, we thought, now maybe it's not worded correctly for that, but we thought you, you could take something like the packing shed and make multifamily use out of it.
You can do that already in many zoning districts if it happens to have a special use permit or special exception in that category.
So there's nothing-
And this would, this would allow you to do it-
Anywhere.
Anywhere if you allowed residential, but you don't. And so you're not going to do it. You can make the candlestick factory, I guess, but you can't do residential, and that's okay.
No, I'm sorry, Mr. Curry. It's not restricting the future use. It's restricting it based on its current type. That's the problem. It's saying anything that's currently residential can't come in and be applied to be used in some other fashion. It's not that you can't convert it to a residential use. That's not what it says.
Well, I don't understand what it says. That's part of our math. And for example, this, it says, "The adaptive use of an existing structure is allowed by special exception issued by the board of supervisors in any zoning district and for any use authorized by this chapter provided the new use meets the standards of this article six. If a structure is determined to qualify for an adaptive use, the permit authorized at such use shall be referred as an existing structure use permit. Adaptive use will not apply to a-
What section is that in your book?
This is one seventy sixty, yeah.
Sixty nine. There's so much-
She's about to say the part that matters.
Right.
One hundred and sixty-nine D one. And it says then, it does say, yeah, I, I, this, this shall not apply to residential structures.
That's, that's-
But I don't know what that means. Does it, is it mean?
Future or past.
It, it's, it's, seems to be in the context of existing. But anyway, it's, it's, I don't think it's ready for prime time, whatever it's supposed to mean.
Which is simply trying to, what, this whole thing was trying to address. I see it clearly. It was trying to address an obsolete building that, and make it productive again. It wasn't looking at taking a residence and turning that into something different. That was not looking to take a residence and, and turn it into a, a Dan Clark office. That's what, that's what that was saying.
Unless it's known for that. If it's already known for that, they could do it.
Right.
Well, then they wouldn't need an adaptive-
They wouldn't need to come under this thing.
Why did they come in there to be seen?
We're just not, we're not looking to fill the countryside of residential homes with adaptive reuse buildings that have doctor's offices, accountant offices, and all this stuff up there. We're just looking at the particular number few buildings that are fifty years out of date. Whether it could be a milking parlor, you know, we have a commercial milking parlor or a slaughterhouse.
And a brothel.
You know? So that's, that's what this whole section was, was trying to do.
Let's see, when, when was it? Not originally, because originally, they specifically said dwelling. So something like Montpelier, you know, it's an unusual property that year.
All right, any, look, any further, let, let's vote on this.
We, we never had anybody spring that before. I mean, is that something that's been talked about?
Oh, because, well, because we never, we never said it wasn't allowed.
That was never discussed. If that was somebody's intention, then it was done without this body's knowledge or the board's knowledge. Where did you get that knowledge?
Well, I just said, I'm just reading what the code said. Generally, the use of a dwelling or other building. I'm just reading what the code said.
You're saying these large homes, where did that come from?
I'm just reading what the code said.
It was already in there.
Yeah.
Right.
I'm not making it up. That's what was in there.
But that's not what the intent is right now.
Right. The intent was to take that out.
And I'm not questioning the intent.
Do you want to change one seventy sixty-nine B one? That last sentence, adaptive use shall not apply to residential structures and modify somehow so it's clear that it is existing residential structures or something like that? Is that what you intend?
Right. That is what, that is what it's supposed to say, existing, exactly right. All right. I'll make that motion. Somebody second it.
Second.
Great. Any further discussion?
Just one. So has, has, I'm hopeful, and I think that's what's happened for the language we have today, that the staff and the county attorney have looked over this for practical and legal sufficiency. Is that the case?
With what the case, that they have looked at over it?
The county attorney and the staff, the staff, has looked this over and feel that what we have here is legally sufficient and have identified, I think, Gary, I think it is the case, but I just want to ask that question. Yeah, I think, Gary, you raised questions, so you've looked at it obviously. And have we, are we going to get, or have we already had legal review of this by our county attorney?
Yes.
Like, two of them.
It's been done.
So do, do you know what they, how they interpret this, Gary?
This is a legislative decision.
Right. It's not a matter of whether it's enforceable. It's a question of whether we want to do it or not.
No.
And the board, the board, when they get it, as they usually do, can do whatever they want when they, when it gets up to them. So that's my motion. It's been seconded.
What is the-
Add the word existing residential use in one sixty-nine subsection, what?
B one.
B one, right. All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say no.
No.
Okay.
All abstain because I've, it's gotten sort of confusing for a moment. But, okay.
Okay, we got four yes, one no, and two abstentions. Now that's up to seven. Look at that. All right. Great. We can move right along.
The pink is just the comment leader. It's that a bed and breakfast is defined as a transient stay in facility. A bed and breakfast is not a stay in facility. It's a facility, what you said.
It's a facility that accommodates transient occupancy
of not more than ten people persons.
So do you intend to say a transient stay in a facility?
No, we need, I don't even know where, how that goes. It should be a facility for transient stays or stays of-
A facility that accommodates not more than X X?
Right, exactly.
Would you say a facility?
Exactly. Get rid of transient stay in. Should just say a facility that accommodates.
For transient stays?
Yes.
Yes. It comes.
Okay. Everybody on board with that?
Um, well, so this is, I appreciate Gary, but Gary's finally put together all this discussion we've had into a single draft. And I feel like this is the first time, you know, we've been able to look at all the language pool together. And so I really try to bear down and look at this closely. And I find that there are a lot of, and I can go through them either as we go or I have handed them to you, lots of issues, some little, some big. Um, someone, Gary, identified, some he didn't. But I, I, I guess my first question is, why are we, why are we amending these provisions? Is this trying to-
Because it's what Gary Light wanted to do, to clean up this whole mess. That's why.
Well-
And the ten-person thing is to bring it, come on, this has been kicking around for five years.
I understand.
We're not going to go through it. All we're doing is what the Mr., we already approved, we already voted to take this to public hearing the way it was. So it's a little late in the game for that. We're going to clean up the words in the pink. That's all we're doing now.
Comments, then I guess we might as well go home on form.
That's your choice. All right. Is everybody, if you have something specific that you are not, that you don't?
Look, I think what we need to do tonight is have light discussion and follow the way Gary Curry, okay?
Yeah.
He was interpreter for the board. Follow his lead on interpretation of this and, and we add a little bit of discussion and not all of this other crap.
And not re- reargue every single one all over again.
Yeah.
Because we've already done that.
We can hear what the board says, what Gary says, and what Art talks is, and we can do-
Right. Okay, so we fixed that. It's going to be a-
Before you did, so go down to the definition that I added for transient lodging. There was discussion on the tape that there was a definition for this, but it wasn't included in any draft, and I think it was on Gary's paper.
Right.
And so I pulled the definition from all of them and stuck it in. Transient lodging. Transient lodging means lodging in which guest rooms or house are less than thirty percent of the day. Is that what you want?
Yeah.
So then transient lodging, quote unquote, should be incorporated into bed and breakfast. So it should say transient lodging that accommodates.
And a facility.
Just transient lodging that accommodates. Transient lodging is, you know, a-
Stop. That's good. That's good, Gary. Go ahead and write it.
Right. Good. So where you have the pink, it's just going to say transient lodging that, right?
Yes.
Great. Perfect.
Uh, you might let it be aware that there's a, transient lodging is also mentioned in our tax provisions relative to bed and breakfast. And that has a extra wording in there that's also contained through the code on tax provisions that is, um, should plan as per the continuous occupation. So I don't know if you want to try to make that consistent with that.
Get that on the next round. All right. Dwelling unit. Should dwelling unit accessory which replaces family apartment, efficiency apartment? Fine. I'm, I agree with that.
So do you, do you have a definition for that? Right now, in one seventy sixteen, basically now the, the definition of transient or of accessory dwelling is incorporated into special conditions.
I, I feel like we need the accessory dwelling unit definition up front too. Because right now, it's just dwelling here. I think all you need to do is take that definition from further back and include it up here.
I agree with that.
There should be a, an accessory dwelling unit. It should come right after-
That's one seventy sixty-two. That's where that section is. And so I would think the planning commission needs to determine what are the special conditions applied upon a dwelling, accessory dwelling unit versus what is an accessory dwelling? And the special condition should remain in one seventy sixty-two. And the definition should be close to that.
I thought there was a definition. I'm not seeing it now.
There was not a definition provided.
Not even back in the fir, not in the back?
Yes.
What, you mean in the front?
In the, no, I meant, no, I know it wasn't in the definition section. I thought I saw it defined.
You go to the definition of dwelling unit, why couldn't you just?
And there are several definitions for dwelling unit. And it would be, to fall in line, it would be dwelling unit comma accessory.
Right. Fine. An additional dwelling unit on a parcel. And then what are you going to do? Cross-reference one seventy dash sixty-two?
Remove as much of, you would remove the definition from one seventy sixty-two G and only approve the, the conditions, which would be, has to be within two hundred feet from any dwelling unit.
Fine.
You know, has to have certain entrances and exits and things like that.
Right. That's fine.
Well, I don't, I want you to tell me with the definition.
Well, just put dwelling unit comma accessory. A, a dwelling unit containing not more than twelve hundred square feet of living space in a structure that includes other accessory space. Oh, wait, no, you don't have to have that part. No, just put a period after in a structure. I'm sorry, of living space. Such a, a, a dwelling unit that contains not more than twelve hundred square feet as accessory to a main structure, well, to an, to an otherwise permitted single-family residence, residential use. Isn't that how we got through years and years without having it in there before?
Well, because we had family apartment and, and efficiency apartments, which were defined.
And guest house and a raw, your fond, and you used it. So you're doing a great job of cleaning all that up?
Thank you.
You're kind of going halfway there.
Well, the next time around, we can go the rest of the way. What happened to, what happened to efficiency apartment?
We got rid of that. We replaced efficiency and family.
Right.
So do I understand correctly that you're taking the-
First line and putting it into the definition.
Under G one, up to some part of that is the definition and then the rest stays under the use.
Up to one, up to one seventy dash eight dwelling unit comma accessory. Okay, we're good?
Is that good, Mr. Curry? So such, where do you want the definition there? So right now, G one says such use shall contain not more than twelve hundred square feet. You want to say-
A, a dwelling, an accessory dwelling unit or a dwelling unit not more than twelve hundred square feet.
So is it a-
That is accessory to a-
Primary dwelling.
Primary dwelling unit. Maybe that's what it should be.
Primary principle.
Dwelling unit prime, comma primary, and dwelling unit comma accessory.
What could you say? An accessory dwelling unit is living space in a structure other than otherwise permitted, singular homes, containing not more than twelve hundred square feet and includes other accessory space. And must be reserved in a designated facility or something.
Well, those are the conditions. Let's keep them out of the definition.
So is it not a dwelling unit on the same lot or parcel?
Same lot.
Principal dwelling?
Yeah, it is.
Is that not an accessory dwelling unit?
Yeah.
And then are there certain restrictions where they're allowed and how quick they are or what?
There are supposed to be in one seventy dash sixty, whatever, T.
So there's no such thing?
So that cross-reference should be in the definition as provided, to very tail end, it should say as provided in one sixty-two, da, 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 da. G one, G one.
So it's never accessory to anything but a dwelling unit? It can't be accessory, I know some of these horse barns and other things, but that's always, it's accessory to its primary residence.
Right.
And if there's no, no such primary residence, then I guess it is the primary residence until something else comes in.
It's for, it's, it's like, it's sort of a halfway between the primary and a second dwelling on a lot. Because if you go to a second dwelling on a lot, then you got to get a special exception permit. So it's halfway in the middle of that. Okay?
So dwelling unit located on the same lot or parcel of the principal dwelling unit is accessory to pursuant to one seventy sixty-two G.
Right, I would say pursuant to, I'd say as permitted by. All right, spa, there's some words devoted especially to, anybody got any problem with that?
My student Gary explained how that we've got.
Yes, so you have, you have in one seventy thirty-six, we have health club and spa already in the newspaper, then you added spa, but then you have a definition under spa.
Well, the reason was.
Why is there no definition for health club spa? So adding definitions is good, but now it's in the newspaper twice.
Well, the problem was, maybe we ought to take spa out of where it says health club or spa, that, that's the answer. The problem was that somebody had a bed and breakfast, they also had a spa. Which not only do we not have a definition of a spa, spas weren't allowed in, exactly, there he is. And they said, oh, well that was like an accessory used to their bed and breakfast.
So are you going to define a health club?
No.
But is it in the newspaper, and what is it? Does the definition, is it a definition in the dictionary?
And how is spa different from health club? That's what we say spas, we, we.
Well, we haven't had it for all these years and like, you know, you're kinda picking these apart, like, oh, they're not perfect, I know they're not perfect, but you know, they were done in three hours' time, and so there's a lot of other.
It's a problem.
What?
A spa, I mean, separate the two words, a spa could exist in, in an ag conservation area, whatever, along with a B and Bs or tourist homes, whatever. A health club implies.
Like a gym.
A gym, a membership type of thing, whether it's gold gym, Falkir, uh, uh, something in Warren, uh, Forts, out there Falkir, Forts, whatever, I forget the name of it, you know.
Forts. Herbert Free.
Yeah. You know, so that, that should only be, a health club should only be in, in a commercial area.
Right.
So it should only be the word spa and then health club.
Right now, health club spa is permitted by right and commercial general.
Right.
Period.
Right.
That's it. You get to do it there and you can't even ask to do it anywhere else.
Right, so it sounds like we're taking spa out of that and then doing a separate line for health, for spa only.
Okay. So if that's some consensus, then one seventy thirty-six D, which is recreation and amusement fields, change the title of the use to just health club and not spa.
Correct, and then spa's gonna be in there separately, correct? With a new definition?
Well.
And you added spa.
Which called spa.
Which has by right in several areas, and then special permanent, that says by right in R two.
But that can be fairly commercial.
No, that's, that's.
Yeah, people coming in all day long.
That shouldn't be there, no.
I don't think so. I don't think it should be in agricultural areas or.
What? I don't either, and I don't think it should be in R two either.
It's not allowed in commercial agriculture. It's special permanent R five, it's permitted by R two, RV, CB, CG.
What do you see in R two? I don't see that.
It's a commercial use.
I'm looking at the.
What?
Yeah, it's.
One seventy thirty-six G, very odd on that table.
Yeah, that's not what we intended.
Commercial retail uses.
Oh, we're creating a commercial use on an elder area.
G?
Here, it's in the table, this bottom line.
Oh. What's right above it?
Taxidermy.
Taxidermy.
Are they in alphabetical order?
Well, in the table section they are. It's under commercial retail business uses.
That's what we said, special permanent.
I gotta have a page out of order or something, cause I'll be done if I see it. I see G, it's at the bottom of the page.
Keep going, several pages in G.
What were you looking for?
Oh, I see, no, this page must be backwards, okay, sorry. No, spa's supposed to, no, that's totally wrong. Spa's only supposed to be permitted in commercial village and commercial general, period.
Yeah, well spa was where we were going up on two eleven at Benvenu for a while.
In highway commercial you could have it, in industrial you could have it.
Yeah, this is some kind of a.
It shouldn't, it should, it should be stricken from RV and R two and RR five.
Not special permanent, special.
No, those should be blank.
Yeah.
Everything should be blank until you get to commercial village.
permitted by right in CB, CG, I, and AC.
Exactly right. Unless you wanna have it in mobile home parks, still, I don't have any of that.
So if it's permitted by right, do you need a site plan? Why would you need a site plan?
No, get that, I was gonna say, get that X out of there.
You can request a required site plan if it's permitted by right and administrative authority. I don't think it's necessary.
Not in those, not in those zones.
All right.
Okay, so then back to the definition.
Right.
My comment on the definition was that it says devoted especially to.
Oh, I thought you're the one who wanted to put that in.
He's, he's saying he wants to take it out.
What does it mean?
Doesn't mean anything.
Just devoted to, not especially.
So whether a spa is devoted especially.
How about we just say four?
No, it's not.
Agreed. Four, to strike especially, devoted especially to and just put four, F O R.
What's it provide?
It's just a facility for health, beauty and relaxation, it's not devoted.
Sounds like my vote.
I think it's religious or something.
I've noticed I've gotten helpful, I'm getting helpful now.
Who is?
Hey.
Yeah, good, well that's.
I think I can give you some lessons.
And eat some.
All right, what are we up to?
We need closure here.
Well, it makes sense to me, I'm sorry.
Of course, I think I'm good on that, especially to.
So we're gonna get a final version of all this to look at again before we vote on it.
No, we're gonna vote on it tonight, if we're doing it right now, we're gonna have it at the public hearing next, two weeks.
I, I think that, I will say, I think that's bad business. I think it's bad business for us to be setting something up in board net language to the board supervisors that we are not sure.
This is gonna be your public hearing in next month.
Yeah, we can still cha-, make changes if we're based on the public comments or even your comments.
Is this because we've already booked the public hearing?
Right, no, you can still change it.
Yeah, I know.
I mean, after the public hearing.
I just don't wanna go to a public hearing, it looks stupid.
Well, we're not gonna look stupid.
You've probably done that.
Oh yeah? Well, nobody's gonna come to it.
It looked pretty stupid for the last one.
Chorus film or boarding house. So this, this issue brought this up as well, these definitions are linked to have one definition, yet there are two rows in the newspaper.
I didn't do that.
Can I make a suggestion here?
Well, that's the way it was, we'll fix it.
Can I make a suggestion?
Put it together, I don't care.
Can I make a suggestion?
What?
Is, is this boarding house even exist anymore? Why don't we just scratch boarding house and scratch the row?
See, it's a home.
Just get rid of boarding house, it used to be a thing for like migrant workers.
Right, I'm for that, I'd like to get rid of adaptive reuse too, but.
I'll just say, I do that, but there are a number of places in the ordinance where it mentions boarding house, so somebody's gonna have to go through and say boarding house.
He'll do that, won't you? Great, we're making progress now. Uh, what are we up to? What's next?
Yeah, I can say back to the definition bed and breakfast, people didn't wanna talk about it, but is, we've got, there are a number of different definitions of bed and breakfast in various areas, and I don't know if there's any desire to make them consistent. For example, in the tax, in tax provisions in our ordinance, we define.
It's not in the zoning ordinance.
We don't, we don't normally work on the tax ordinance, that would be the work of the board of supervisors.
We'll fix it after we fix this.
I'm just, I'm just pointing it out, and it maybe is not a different, I'm just raising a question, so we say bed and breakfast should have no more than five rows, but in the tax code it says eight rows. I'm just pointing that out.
So that needs to be updated, because that was under the, the idea that we could issue up to X number, but then when we found out that, that put it in a whole new category in the building office and in the health department.
If you're talking about our local tax.
Yeah, the meals and lodging tax stuff.
I wouldn't presume that that's any more in state design.
Yeah, well, it's the problem, they shouldn't, different organi-, there should be one designated organization that defines these things and then everybody else.
So you already agreed on the definition of transient, crazy budget, correct?
Yep. All right, so, the next thing that I see is where you caught the retail thing, we got the schools, we fixed that.
Health school spa, so all these different, in newspapers, less than grade than.
Yeah, there's three of them now.
Ignoring the building.
Twenty-five or fewer or with.
Those are all accepted.
Wait, wait a minute, oh yeah, twenty-five or more than twenty-five, that's right. And then you've got, you've got the schools, public and private, then you've got the medical care, you fixed that with the beds, ten or fewer beds and greater than, is it more than ten? Somebody was always beating me up, and they beat me up so many times about whether it should say more than or greater than, then I can't remember which is the correct way.
You'll get it.
Hmm?
You'll get it.
Great, all right, then there was somewhere stores, retail. Well, you've got country in, less than five acres use, okay, we, we took that out. Five or fewer and, I thought we were gonna take that out altogether.
Well, they're two different uses.
Because we never, we never could, no one could, we weren't at that meeting either, no one knows what using more than that, less or more than the acres.
I was comfortable with what it says, and then.
You were?
An applicant who comes forward and says, I wanna use a large chunk of my thousand acre parcel, we're gonna have to go through the board supervisors, and if the applicant says, I wanna use two acres, they go to the BZA.
But what is use? What's the use? What, what part of it are you using?
It might be the same use in either case. You've got a thousand acres and only use two acres.
They're enabled to use more than five acres for their country in, whatever they might do.
Well, my vote as a BZA member is just take out the five, more of five, less than five and make it a special use permit, period, no matter how many acres they're using.
I agree, you can't tell what they're gonna, they're gonna put a hiking trail.
I mean, we had that, and what, what happens is applicants then cherry pick what board they think they're gonna do better at.
Where's our definition of country in?
I thought we had.
Give you a definition before you start along.
The definition doesn't say about how many acres it uses.
I don't think it's much of a definition.
It has a minimum or something, but anyway.
I thought we'd agreed.
It's a number of people, and you did change it.
I thought we'd agreed to get rid of that distinction.
But then we took that out.
I thought we agreed to get rid of that distinction.
But this part about the special use or special exceptions, everybody on board with that? Let's get rid of the five acre break and just have country in, retreat or lodge, special use permit.
I'd like to have a good definition of country in.
Special exception.
It is a use which provides temporary, it should say that, the use that provides temporary lodging, meals, entertainment, recreation, and service for up to forty persons in a rural setting.
Up to forty.
Up to forty.
You went down this rabbit hole during the meeting about trying to change over to the rule.
We decided to leave that.
We decided to leave it, but let's just do, at least do this, and have it one permit so you can't cherry pick what board you're going to. Because that's totally ambiguous, what does it mean?
I would say I sense it can include using more than five acres, or just keep it a special exception.
Well, they've tried to argue it on, on the winery up here, saying, well, they're only using two acres or something instead of their forty-five.
Well, to me, they had a twenty acre parcel and they had a house that occupies like one or two acres, and so what are they quote-unquote using? How much, are they using just the part where the building structure is, or if people walk out and walk around the place and say, oh, well, I walked into the sixth acre, so I'm in a different category? No, we, let's all make it S U P. Agreed?
No, I say we make it S E.
All right, let's vote on it.
S E or S P?
S P. One category, S P. Clay.
I.
Henry.
I.
Conick, I. Shulun.
I.
Fraser.
A.
What?
Especially.
N.
Color. I'm standing.
Um.
What's the vote?
I was gonna say, I think it ought to be an S E, nay.
So we got one, two, three, four I's. Wait a minute.
Three, four to three.
Four to three, no, that's a different four to three, excuse me.
I see, we can count the votes again.
All right, no, this isn't, come on man, this isn't Michigan. All right, good.
Gary, did you get that? So you want me to remove the use row?
The second reuse row and strike the business about how many acres are used. Just country in, S P.
And just to be sure, one seventy sixty-five E is, isn't it consistent with anything?
No.
And we're keeping it as S E.
S P, no, we voted four to three, S P.
We voted four to three against your motion.
No, we voted four, three, four my vote.
I voted for the motion.
You voted? One, two, three, four.
Sorry, my fault.
No, it was four to three.
You're on the nay end of the table.
Sorry.
All right, so we got the schools, we did that. Were retail sales, good catch, because I caught all the others, but I didn't catch that one, so it's another one of these, two thousands feet gross or less, and more, greater than two thousand square feet. And less than five thousand, okay, great, so that's all.
So this, this was three tier.
That was what?
It's three tiers, under two thousand, two to five.
Two to five and then greater than five, right. All right, building materials, same fix. Office, same fix, three persons or fewer, three persons or more, or more than three persons, okay, great. Then office comma business, less than two thousand, or two thousand feet or fewer, and then more than two thousand, good. Tourist home, we, we've cleaned that up, or we straightened that out, we're striking boarding house.
Spa rows cleaned up.
Spa rows cleaned up, wholesale, trade establishment, under and over, that's fixed, wholesale, trade establishment, that's fixed. Processing, storage, sale of agricultural products grown off-site.
Yes, I have a.
Other than meat processing.
Yes, I thought when we discussed this, we, for the, across the board, we were going to limit it in its scale in some way, and then have a, a category for larger ones that could be only in like agriculture and, and commercial, but not in residential.
This is only for off-site.
Right.
So right now, this is not limited in scale in any way, so you could have a.
Well, it's limited to whatever they'll approve. That's what we discussed, we went round and round over at the, at the high school auditorium, I remember, and finally said, let them, let the board decide based on the general conditions of one seventy fifty-two.
That was for the additional permit, but I thought we had two different size categories that we were gonna put in different rows.
I didn't remember that, and what were they?
Is this meat processing that we're on?
Yeah.
So I just wanted to point out.
Well, we got agricultural products other than meat.
First one's not meat processing.
Right, the meat processing, maybe I'm misreading this, but it looks like we already have, um, under industrial heavy use, uh, stockyards and all the things that will be meat processing, and they just put them allowed in industrial only. So in, um, existing ones, so, so the definition of agriculture specifically excludes the operating or maintenance of a commercial stockyard, um, and one seventy dash thirty-six F includes a category for heavy industrial uses, and then in one seventy dash sixty-seven C, says additional standards for heavy industrial uses states that includes grinding, cooking, boiling, rendering or storage of slaughter, house refuse, animal refuse, rampant fat or refuse of dead animals, it exclude, includes stockyards, and it includes canning, curing or storing of raw hides or skins.
Yeah, well, none of that's meat.
What is it?
What? None of that.
That's everything but meat.
A stockyard is defined, not in our code, we don't have it in our code, but Webster defines a stockyard as the, a yard for livestock, specifically one in which transient cattle, sheep, flying, or.
Transient cattle.
And or for slaughter, market or chimney.
Okay.
So it sounds like.
They're ready for it, but they're not doing the slaughtering there, and they're not doing the meat packing there, that's a separate use, I would say.
Sounds like the same use today, so we should define.
That's why we need more farmers on the planning commission. Well, I mean, so we're, well, let's go back to where we were, are we, with this, I mean, I don't see any comments, I thought we were only doing the things that we had a comment.
Well, this was one that we didn't, we, we did not really resolve, and it doesn't seem to me to reflect what we said. I, it seems to me, to me, to have this art in R two without some kind of size limit.
I, I think that's a mistake.
I think, yeah, if we're gonna have.
It shouldn't be in the R two, it shouldn't be in the RV, and it shouldn't be in the, it should only be in commercial agriculture, commercial village, commercial general, highway commercial and industrial.
Where are you?
I'm on the page where, down near the bottom, it's got meat, the meat processing and the processing, but meat. That one, the first one's got SEs all the way across, and it should only be, and it shouldn't be in conservation either, frankly.
Yes, it should be in conservation.
Too steep. All right, it should be S E, S E in the first two columns, RR five blank, R two blank, RV blank, commercial village, eh, what do you say?
I think it's okay.
I mean, the difference between a T and an S E is that, so I'm just gonna have to come before the board and the planning commission, explain why the use fits the parcel.
Okay.
If it can't, it doesn't happen.
Okay, fine, so it could, it could be in commercial village, commercial general, S E, highway commercial, that's okay, and industrial, that's fine, but there's a couple residential districts, RR five, R two and RV, it should, those three should be blank. districts, RR5, R2, and RV, it should, those three should be blank.
Okay, I'm, I'm okay with that, but I thought that the other way of doing that was if it's a very small scale, maybe it could be in those other zones, but I'm okay with it as it is, but you've addressed my concern with that too.
I mean, come on, if you lived in Spurig, come on, you live in Spurig, it's a meat pack-
Well, no, no, we're talking about non-meat, so a food processing place in an R, in an R5 that has three people canning doesn't strike me as necessarily a problem, so I, you know, I just wanna make sure we're all doing what we intend to do.
Yeah. What?
I think you're letting the opportunity try to convince the likely body, I feel okay if they're putting corn in the pantry.
You know, it could be, you know, right, they're corn canning, making sauerkraut, whatever.
Got giant goat stacks and everything, then it's probably gonna come to a quick no.
So a commercial kitchen, a commercial kitchen's required for any type of food process by state of the nation. If you get in five hundred pounds of jelly beans and you put it in one pound bag, you need a commercial kitchen.
Not if you do it at night.
No, you can't do it. You can do it at night, but when you sell them, it has to have completely packaged.
But commercial kitchen is not actually that, that, that rugged yet.
Not gonna make you-
But you have to have the zoning.
So what are you saying now? Leave the SEs the way they are?
Yeah.
Alright, let's vote.
What's the vote?
What are we voting on?
Vote is to leave, it seems like Alan's motion is to leave it the way it is, and leave it as a special, the processing of non-meat, other than meat, just the way it is in the chart, S E all the way across.
Agricultural projects, products other than meat?
Yes.
Special exception?
Yeah.
Offsite.
For all, yeah, like jelly beans and other stuff. Why don't we make, well, I don't know, why don't you give some business to the BZI, come on. What do you say, Mr. Tickleman?
Do we want that residential village area?
What?
Want that in the residential village also?
I don't think so, I, I, you heard what I saw.
Again, I thought-
Only if it fits.
Listen to what Mr. Carey said, and that somebody comes in for an S E, they gotta make their case on why it's, it's-
It's okay, like, they're only gonna do jelly beans at night.
Gonna do jelly beans, gonna do-
Two thousand square feet, and there's gonna-
In their garage.
There are no trucks, and then they're gonna take them out, and there are personal cars.
At night.
Yeah.
It's gotta be grown, first of all, so it's not gonna be a jelly bean, it's gotta be grown.
That's all, that's the more-
But peanuts, say peanuts.
Have you ever planted any jelly beans?
Marley beans.
Yeah. Yeah, I planted them a lot of times, and they never come up.
It's when you climb up in the clouds.
What?
It's when you're up in the clouds.
Okay, we gotta move on this one, and talk about it more.
Before we do, now I'm back to my original point, which is, without, I thought we were gonna do something, it said, you know, maybe a small scale, less than five employees, and less than ten thousand square feet could be in all those places, but a full-scale industrial, we wouldn't allow in these places.
Well, the board is, it'll be up to the board when it'll be-
Alright, you gotta come in and they gotta make their case.
Well, then why don't we just do everything a special exception, we don't want to do all this something stuff.
Yeah, call it an abandoned use. Alright, I'm running out of stuff that I see anymore pink. I haven't seen any pink stuff for a long time.
We're gonna have to assume that the boards that review the-
Here's one.
Have more sense than we do.
Revocation. What does that say?
That's what you're using, David.
I, I'm, I, I, I'm not the father of-
Why, uh, why, if this is being added, why would it not include a local ordinance? Uh, because that, uh, that was put in like the things that are in the Virginia Administrative Code, like about how many towels you have to have, if you're spunked.
If they aren't paying their taxes, or they're breaking some other local ordinance, why wouldn't one have put that in there?
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
Oh, so you wanna add that? Okay, that's fine, I'm for that.
And what were we looking for?
So, or, before law, or, strike, or, put state law, uh, applicable, state law, regulation, local ordinance, or the express terms and conditions, okay?
Comma, regulation, considers, or, local ordinance.
You wanna put federal in there?
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, could you draw me to what we're talking about?
One seventy dash sixty-one, revocation. Any special blah 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 shall be revocable on the order of the issuing authority, the BZI and the board when there has not been compliance with, and we're gonna insert, any applicable state law or regulation, comma, ordinance, or the express terms and conditions of the special permit or special exception.
And, and why not local?
Hmm?
And why not local in addition to state?
We can add it.
Oh, you are?
Yeah, I'm gonna add it, yeah, I'm gonna add local ordinance. Okay? And probably while you're at it, you ought to switch around the order of special permit and special exception, but that's up to you, in that same line. I didn't catch that, but one seventy sixty-six.
Except in cases of-
Alright.
What are you saying?
You got a special, you got exception and special permit, basacres.
I don't have any.
Well, the, the way it is is basacres, but terms and conditions of the, it should be special exception or special use permit, 'cause special exception's higher, and granted by the board versus of supervisors as opposed to the BZI, and I think most everywhere else. Well, no, in the first sentence. Alright, leave it alone. Alright, additional standards for spas or health clubs, we dealt with this, yes?
Hold on, so let's just, you've separated spas from health clubs.
Yeah.
Do you want these additional standards to apply to both spas and health clubs?
Yeah.
But are they applicable?
I, I don't think they apply to health clubs, 'cause now we put health clubs just in the commercial areas. So I think they're just for spas.
Come on, they, it must, why wouldn't you want it the same way? What's in here that is a problem?
I don't know, I don't know about twelve back five, four sixty-two, one seventy.
Something about towels. They gotta have an entrance permit, and the BZI may have imposed additional-
Well, are they, but wait a minute, are health clubs still going for special permits?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say.
I'm not sure they are.
It says BZI and the number five, should be the BZI or board, or just put the board. Where are health clubs now? They're back here somewhere. What time is it really? I keep looking at that clock like it's gonna be different.
I'm no, I'm no longer seeing the line for health club. Where do we send those?
What?
Recreation.
Under recreation. What category number is that?
D.
Hmm?
D.
D? No, just their numbers.
And it's permitted by right, so that section doesn't have a point to it.
Yeah, so there's no-
You never get to article, whatever, five, that gets permitted by right.
Okay.
Scratch health clubs.
You can scratch health clubs. Great.
And spas is-
Alright, one seventy-seven sixty-six.
Hold on, hold on.
Category?
So spa, the use template for spa has permitted by right in C, D, C, G, I, and H6. So that whole section is, is not used?
What? That, that's a tabulation error, that shouldn't be there.
Well, I'm, your dice lost me.
The changes we just went over, one seventy thirty-six, for health clubs has it permitted by right, um, in commercial general, therefore, the special conditions don't apply.
Why?
Because it's permitted by right, you only have to get to that article if it's a special exception or special use permit.
I'm not sure of that.
Wait a minute. And then for-
Wait a minute, wait a minute, let's go to the beginning of one, special, whatever. No, I don't think so, because sexual, it all starts in sixty-two, which just says, shall be regulated as follows.
Special permits and special exceptions, article six.
What? Yeah, but all these additional standards that start in sixty-two, sixty-three, they're additional standards, they don't say whether it's by right or any other way.
You gotta look earlier at the article.
I don't know. I don't think so. I think even if it's a by right, you still have to meet those standards.
Establishment of categories, one seventy fifty-one, for purposes applying specific conditions upon certain types of special permits and special exceptions uses, and for allowing such uses to be settled, only for those any districts which are appropriate areas for such uses, all special permits and special exception uses are divided into categories and associated for related uses hereafter, such as in article six.
Where are you reading, fifty-one?
One seventy fifty-one, article-
Fifty-one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Six is only applies to special permits and special exceptions. It's, that's the title of the entire article.
Whoever reads that. Okay, I see what you're saying.
And one seventy forty-seven, general, permitted uses are discussed in one seventy sixteen, special permit and special exception uses are expressed in one seventy seventeen and eighteen respectively, one seventy five, one seventy eight.
Alright.
Because uses which normally would not be allowed in particular general district, but may be allowed by special permit for special exception, because you're not following special rules.
Right. Good, there's something else we can discuss, or we do the whole thing. Alright, so, back to health clubs and spas.
So do you intend them to be permitted by right in one seventy thirty-six, or should they be special permit?
Special permit.
Or, for spas now, we're back to spas, yes, those should have been special.
Special permit, should be permitted by right anyway, we have special use permits.
And that would be for commercial village, personal general, industrial, and, and highway.
Correct.
And what are we doing about health clubs?
And then health club is permitted by right in commercial general.
And that's it. So therefore, you don't need, you can strike it out of that one seventy sixty-
So we have one seventy sixty-five, other-
Strike health clubs.
We just strike health clubs.
Right.
So you don't want to have any standards on health clubs?
It's only permitted by right in industrial district.
No, in commercial.
Commercial, whatever. They're gonna have to do all that stuff anyway.
But the state, they've got their own regulations.
All the stuff that's in there, they're not gonna do, they gotta have a health permit, they gotta, if they're in a commercial general, it's already on a primary road, that's so forth and so on, so, all that stuff, it sounds great, but it's already covered. Okay, what are we up to now?
One seventy sixty-six, which is-
The next thing down here, private road thing, tourist home.
So why do we even have to remove the permit for bed and breakfast at a four- acre lot? If you, if you're living, if you're living in it in ten people, I, I'm assuming that bed and breakfast and tourist homes, which are essentially Airbnbs, are in people's houses now?
No, bed and breakfast is not an Airbnb.
Yeah, I would trust those.
All, all those uses are primarily in residential districts, or agricultural districts.
But if you've got a bed and breakfast, are you meaning to say five bedrooms, that, that might work for a bed and breakfast, but it doesn't work for an Airbnb, you're gonna rent the whole house out. I don't get that.
Not necessarily, I mean, when Airbnb started, I think they were renting rooms with air mattress on the floor and lawn chairs.
You can still rent a room at somebody's house in Airbnb.
Pardon?
You can still rent a room at somebody's house.
You can, but are we, are we intending to limit it to that? You can't, you can't-
What are we on? What are you on?
This is Mrs. Ish, Mrs. Ish's concern relative to definitions. My, my concern simply was-
Where, where are you?
One seventy, I'm like, one seventy sixty-six, category five, K, four.
Wait a minute, I'm at five, K, four, right.
So here, the planning commission is inserting the ten and twenty acres again, which this, if you recall, the planning commission held a public hearing, passed to the board, the board held a public hearing, and they declined to change it. They voted, they decided to keep it exactly the same, the ten acres for A and C, and so now you're saying, board, we don't think you know what you're talking about in your last public hearing.
Wait, wait, that's not exactly right, that isn't exactly right what happened. What happened was, first of all, the board already changed it, they thought they changed it, and then-
I know, but we have an issue.
And then it was void, okay, so then they went, so then they brought it back, and the board, the, the planning commission voted not to do it piecemeal, and so then the board didn't do it piecemeal, but there's a, there's a nuance, wait a minute, there's a nuance here that isn't in either one of the void, ab initio, or anything else, and that is, 'cause that's what I wrote, it says the minimum is ten and twenty acres, provided however, the BZI can waive the minimum acreage, it, only if the property has frontage on a public, on a paved road that is part of the state primary or secondary system, so there, in that case, you could go under the minimum acres, up to the discretion of the BZI, if they, if they meet those criteria, whereas that was never part of the board's, the supervisor's original amendment, or the other amendment that came, and then they wanted to do it piecemeal, that was never in there.
So the planning commission thought that the board may want twenty acres for conservation because the BZI can reduce it if they want.
They can if they want, that's right.
And that wasn't part of the original.
And that was never part of, it was right.
That's what the planning commission-
And that's what they, we passed, they passed, they passed that a long time ago. Alright, good. Can I repeat that? No, you'll have to watch the video.
The next page, the tourist home. Guests of lodges shall be allowed only between reasonable hours.
Yeah.
The audio said you guys settle on certain hours, as your eater are very good.
I say strike it. Nine A, guests of lodges, I mean, how many, come on, people don't, is that really an issue? And plus, Michelle, how many times have you been called out in the middle of the night that they had illegal guests at the lodges? Zero. So, come on, as a practical matter, there, even if someone violated, it's completely ridiculous to try to enforce it.
So-
And by, there, come on.
What's the consensus?
Strike nine A is my motion.
I'm fine with striking it, it could always be added as a condition, if it's a special permit.
Right.
So everyone else just move then.
Then it only goes to E. Good. And P S, that came from the state legislature, they were gonna put that in, not us. Category seven, I, what's the comment, there are no recommendations?
So you think that there's enough, um-
Right.
Conditions on meat processing and-
Well, they can just do it on the general fifty-two conditions, section fifty-two.
But there, you know, we have, we just talked about ten and twenty acres for a tourist home, you have a meat processor, you go in a two acre lot.
If you can convince the board that that's okay, and the neighbors don't-
You can convince the board that bed and breakfast on a two acre lot, okay.
They could.
I would much rather have the next to a tourist home that has meat processing.
I agree, and I'd say the meat processor's gonna have a much harder time than the bean-
Shouldn't the meat processor be on the state road?
Well, I-
Should it have, should, if it's sharing a private lane with somebody else, should there be certain restrictions?
I wrote all that stuff and everybody struck it, I agree with you.
I was just, seemed to me it was a pretty intensive use without any special conditions.
No, we didn't, we, 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 I don't remember that this commission even discussed the meat processing part, we talked about all the non-meat stuff.
The meat processors-
Meat processing allowed in two zones, right?
So we should, we should make at least clarity what we think about meat processing.
So industrial, like, come on, there's not any two acre industrial lots, there's only one industrial place in the whole county, and that's your main plant, right?
No, that's not industrial.
We don't have any definition of what meat processing means.
Who?
Esther's property is very-
Esther?
The glasswork.
Oh, that.
The forms.
Well, good, I can dump it right there.
He's the only one who's left in Estherville.
I didn't know that that was-
It was.
So could we, could we-
Right next to Thomas subdivision, eh?
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. I wonder if we could at least, for meat processing, clarify what it is, so that we, we can at least specify that it's not a thing that are covered in other sections?
There is also, it's not a definition.
What?
For meat processing.
You really wanted to find that it meat?
Is this a slaughterhouse? What is this?
We should just say it's not, it's not, other than things that are covered in one, uh, one seventy dash thirty-six F and one seventy dash sixty-seven C.
Which is, what, you had before?
Yeah, the industrial heavy uses.
Okay.
Meat processing is liable for conservation, agriculture, and industrial, a special exception.
All, all of them by special exception?
Those three.
And conservation, did you say conservation?
Yeah. Well, that is proposed.
Alright, well, I already said my piece on that.
And you want to have a definition?
So would this include a place that would, like, if you take your deer when you shoot it?
Yep.
There's no necessity. There's no reason why that couldn't be on a farm.
Must they shot it on that farm? There's no reason why that couldn't be on a farm, which could be on a, you know, a back road.
Well, we already have one like that in town. Well, if we, if we put a definition in, it might just be adequate to say a processing that's not those other two provisions.
You can limit it to the square footage. You would have gotten paid. Look up page and see what they're gonna mention. Can you do that on here?
So I'll tell you all a little history here, a little bit, local history. A slaughter permit is like gold in all we join counties. If you got one, it's the most valuable grandfather permit that probably exists in the surrounding county. I knew somebody was looking for one a couple of years ago, and, you know, to go out and do a new plant, nobody wants a facility next to it. So the political reality of getting a new slaughterhouse approved is almost nil in every jurisdiction. So the existing permits are just so valuable. And that's the way it is in multiple counties surrounding us probably for seventy-five months. Having said that, common sense tells you that, you know, to do a slaughterhouse, you're gonna need a larger piece of land, because you have to have the disposal of the wastewater, whether it's a drain field or a processing or some type of plant. And then the more room you have, the less complaints you're gonna have, less potential for odors and that kind of thing. So, common sense tells you unless you really got a specialty plant that's just doing, you know, one animal, two animals a day, that you're gonna, you're gonna have a large piece of land, which pushes, that's why most of these, most of the parcels are zoned ag out in the countryside that have these plants. So. And probably a plant, a new plant is probably a million dollars to do a five, ten thousand dollar, ten thousand's worth of building to meet the new SDA requirements.
And so, what's your motion?
That's the little background.
Oh.
Well, so after you have your first meat processor apply for a permit, you get through all the stuff, that's special exception in the public hearing, then you'll make the rules for the next guy?
Yeah.
After the first one's through?
I mean, look, I mean, when's the last time, besides the last time I read it, anybody read one seventy dash fifty-two, general standard? It will, the first one is, "It will not adversely affect the use or development of neighboring properties and shall be in accordance with the applicable zoning district regs. The location, size, height of buildings, structures, walls, fences, nature, and extended screening, buffering, landscaping shall be such that the use will not hinder or discourage the appropriate development and or use of adjacent or nearby land and or buildings or impair the value thereof." Well, you know, you drive a lot of meat trucks through that. I mean, that gives the board a lot of authority to do just about anything. The next thing is.
You're not gonna make legislation.
Pedestrian and vehicular traffic will not be hazardous or conflict with the existing or anticipated traffic in the neighborhood. C, adequate drainage, parking, loading, other necessary facilities shall be provided. Parking and loading have to be in accordance with the provisions of, you know, the parking and loading sections. Signs, et cetera. Oh, that reminds me, that's something I wanna talk about that we need to add, that I keep on forgetting to bring up. And so as soon as I get done reading these, we're gonna do that. Skip ahead and come back. "The future impact shall be considered in establishing a time limit." F, "The proposed use of air quality and surface or groundwater," so that can, takes care of all the waste products and the whatever runoff and the blood and all that. Great. "The proposed use will not be, will not result in unsafe conditions relation to community facilities, police, fire protection, congestion, and travel. The proposed use will not cause undue impact on the sanitary landfill, solid waste collection. The proposed use will not create undue impact on historic or scenic qualities of the immediate area." And last but not least, it'll be, it won't be detrimental to the implementation, implementation of the adopted comprehensive plan, including the goals contained therein. So you can limit anybody to just about anything.
Why do we have any of this?
And that's what we talked about. To alleviate all the special conditions.
I mean, we're, we're, big tourist homes, go through all this stuff for all these restrictions, and we're not gonna require a regular slaughterhouse.
Wait a minute, all right, okay, so that's.
Well, you don't have a lot to tell you about.
We, I mean, I wrote up a whole, a whole list of things, and then everybody said, no, we don't need that, we don't need that, and then we took them all out, so.
Who's the everybody you're referring to? That wasn't us.
We always, we always, we always have guests in their house, but we're, you know, we're not gonna worry about like a ten thousand square foot processor plant.
All right. All right, sorry to do this, but this isn't on the list, this is something new. But it's really important, because it's a complete mistake, and it's very simple, it's like a one-word change. In the sign ordinance.
Mr. Connor, we decided we're not gonna do anything further with this?
We're not gonna.
I don't know, we'll come back to it, but I wanna do this before I forget.
All right.
So just, it's sort of a timeout. Look at one seventy dash one oh eight, use permit special exceptions. Here's what it says, it's one paragraph, very short. "In the event that a special permit or special exception is granted to an applicant in a conservation, agricultural, or residential zoning district, then in such event, the BZA or the board may determine the size and type of sign to be allowed, taking into consideration the surrounding property uses and comp plan, provided that such signs shall not exceed the use of signs, I'm sorry, shall not exceed the size of signs allowed in the commercial and industrial district." And listen to the last sentence. "If not limited, commercial and industrial zoning district regulations shall apply." Well, those are the biggest signs allowed in the whole ordinance, I think two hundred and fifty square feet. So, that second, that last paragraph, that sentence, in my opinion, should be stricken, because what it says is unless the BZA or board imposes some limitation on the sign, on the size of a sign, on any special permit or special exception, they get the biggest sign that's allowed in the commercial industrial districts. And I somehow bumbled into that at some point when I was on the BZA and started getting the BZA to impose that as a condition, either no sign or what size sign, but basically, I mean, it should be, well, I just, my proposal would be to strike the last sentence.
Should be for the zoning district and what the use is, no matter what the use is.
Well, just right, it just should.
I agree with, that the change is needed, I'm having a little trouble with the sort of random nature of the changes we're making across the board, but beyond that, I do agree with you on the, on the.
Well, it's an easy fix, just take out that last sentence, it should be the, I don't know, it should be the smallest sign applies if they, unless they grant you a bigger sign, you should be restricted to the smallest sign in the ordinance. Not, no is basically no.
Well, that's a good point, what is, what would happen if you'd strike the line, then you're just in ambiguity if they go define it. Right, if you just strike the line, that's not really enough, is it?
No, it'll just be, "Then the board may determine the size and type of sign to be allowed, taking into consideration blah, blah, blah." But then it, it did that, and then it guts it with the last thing, it says if they don't do anything, and about ninety-nine percent of the time, they don't do anything, 'cause they don't know that's in there.
I understand, but if you.
Kind of the hidden weenie, so if you take that out, you'll be good.
But if you take it out, then what happens if they don't?
The BZA or board determines the size of the sign.
And if they don't?
Well.
We don't know what happens.
It goes with the underlying use.
Yeah. Let's, maybe we have a change may determine, should be, shall determine the size and type.
Well, this is what I'm saying, it's a little hard to do this, this way.
The planning commission is gonna be taking a comprehensive view of the sign.
All right.
I understand, but it's.
Well, I think we're gonna strike that last line for now. Everybody agree to that?
No, I didn't want to take it up, I don't know what that means.
You don't?
I mean, in the spirit of cooperation, I'm, I'm okay with taking it out, I just think that this is a dangerous way to go about changing the zoning ordinance. You say that about a lot of.
All right, so.
I think we're just kinda jumping around.
How do you feel about, Mr. Henry?
Fulling some words and moving on. I feel like we're.
There's comment down there.
We're rushing, we're rushing on a couple of these things that are being like blown up to the side and be moved.
Mr. Curate, you're at fault.
I wanna be careful.
It's not even in the draft right now, because it's not a section that you touched at all.
Right.
And so, you know, we'll have to add it all in here, I think you should wait till you do the sign work, which is gonna be really high on the list.
Yep, it is, it's the next thing after we get this done.
Back to the slaughter.
Okay, back to the slaughterhouse. Everybody comfortable with just having it be regulated by one seventy fifty-two, what I read?
I, I, I just think we need a definition, and just for, and that's not even substantive, it's just good clarity in the, in the ordinance, so that we don't have confusion, that's what.
Okay, what, let's write it. We can't do the other thing, but now this we're gonna write on the fly. Okay, "A facility in which meat is processed for."
Other than.
Yeah, wait, for, wait a minute.
Is this on your hand now?
Pardon me?
Is this on your hand now?
Not as, not as, not as language, no.
Well, good, maybe we should do it when we do the sign one.
You just have, you just have an internally consistency in here, because you've got, you've got provisions relating to meat processing, and this must be something else, but I don't know what it is.
I, I think that that's everything but meat processing, the thing you read before. Didn't say meat processing, getting rid of the guts and getting rid of those hides and.
Making glue and gelatin.
Are we doing slaughterhouses definition?
Yeah.
Slaughterhouse is, is, is a facility that kills animals.
And processes them, or?
But, but we're not.
Well, in your permission, right?
But we're not limiting this, 'cause you don't have, this is a place where you can bring stuff that's already dead too, presumably. According to what I said before, like the deer example I get. So it's not a slaughterhouse, it.
Okay, why don't you sit, we're gonna take a five-minute recess, 'cause it's time for bathroom break.
Yeah.
And you guys can work out the definition and read it when we come back. Okay?
Working verse two. You either pin down exactly what meat processing is through a clear definition, or explain what it is or what it isn't, or you're relying on Code of Virginia and the zoning administrator to make an interpretation.
Right, I think that's.
This is or is not, and that determination is what it is unless it's P.
Is, is there a definition in the code?
No.
What, one way.
The Code of Virginia, I mean.
Of slaughterhouse, of meat processing?
Yeah, yeah.
If we could.
I mean, I would think the health department's got it.
Instead of having meat processing under ag, we could just take and put under that heavy industrial use, just put it in the areas where we want the slaughterhouses to be.
What do you mean by that?
So you just, right now, the code, under, under one seventy dash thirty-six.
Yeah.
Whatever section is, I think it's only, it's allowed in industrial use.
Right.
So just say it's by special exception in whatever we have for the meat processing. We just don't have meat processing there.
So it's gonna be a SE instead of a P?
No, keep it a P, well, keep that, whatever you have for meat processing, put it, put it under that section. So you don't have a definition, or should, does that make sense to me?
No, I don't get, I'm not following, 'cause you're not gonna have the one seventy fifty-two things if it's not a special exception or special use permit. So we'd have to make it an SP or an SE.
Right.
Let's make it an SP. In industrial. And, and I think it ought to be in commercial general as well, under SP, and then they can decide, like the other things we talked about.
The meat processing is SE or in.
Is what?
Special exception.
Oh, it is, oh, oh.
C, A, and I.
Okay. So then they can apply one seventy dash fifty-two.
What are you referring to, 'cause it's not in there now? You mean what we, what we did earlier tonight?
Yeah, what you're proposing, what you're hearing from the public.
So right now.
Wait, what are you gonna do now?
It's under meat processing is SE. Three zones, agriculture, for conservation, and industrial. Query, do you wanna have any commercial general as well?
The Code of, the Code of Virginia defines slaughterhouses.
It does?
Yeah. What section? Well, there's, there's, under definition, three point two sixty-five hundred, and then there's Code of Virginia, chapter fifty-four, slaughterhouses, meat, dress poultry.
There you go. So we don't have to reinvent the wheel here.
Right.
Maybe you say meat processing means slaughterhouse?
Right. Well, you could use a fancy word and say, how do you pronounce it, albatour? Albatour?
I thought that was a funeral.
I'm sorry, Ron, what was, could you leave the definition?
Well, I didn't read the definitions, but the definitions in the Code of Virginia can be found in three point two dash sixty-five hundred, under definitions, and then under chapter fifty-four.
Right, what is the, read it, read the little section that you just said, what is it?
I don't normally read it, no.
Well, you've got it up there, and I don't.
Just to be clear, that's the definition of slaughterhouse, not meat processing facility, correct?
Right.
So why are we, if that's what we mean, why don't we call them slaughterhouses?
How about, or how about meat processing slash slaughterhouse? And then the definition, you can just put meat processing slash slaughterhouse. See, Code, the Code of Virginia section, what'd you say, thirty?
But that, that's not, the problem is that you have, you have two sec, you have meat processing under ag, and then you've got a bunch of things that could fit under a slaughterhouse under heavy industrial uses, so which is yet.
You've got three point two forty-eight hundred, maybe that'll work for you. So let's just.
You have to distinguish meat processing from these other things that are already industrial uses somehow.
The zoning administrator does that when you apply for it. She can just say.
Well, you can leave it, but it just creates an inconsistency.
Well, let's put that in the definition section, that's what I'm saying. Meat processing slash, let's change it from meat processing to meat processing slash slaughterhouse, and then in the definition, put, put it under meat processing slaughterhouse, see, Code, let's say it again, Ron. Thirty-two point.
Are you gonna take out the other stuff under industrial uses, but they're, but they overlap?
I, I don't agree with that, what, what section are you saying overlaps? Tell me again.
Look at.
Sixty what?
Look at one seventy dash sixty-seven C.
Sixty-seven. Sixty-seven?
Yeah.
Junkyard.
That includes those things.
Hold on, one sixty-seven?
Those are additional standards for heavy industrial uses, which shall include.
Right.
Those various things. Storage of slaughterhouse refuse, animal refuse, dead animals.
Well, I, I still don't see it. I see this giant list, but I don't see what you're reading.
Read down.
What's right before it? Stockyards, I see. Oh, grinding, cooking, boiling, rendering, or storage of slaughterhouse refuse, animal refuse, rancid fats, or refuse of dead animals. Well, if you're just slaughtering the meat and you're disposing of it, so I take it over to the landfill. It's a meat food product.
Well, if you have slaughterhouse refuse, it's gonna have to be in heavy industrial use that is provisioned. So if you have slaughterhouse, you just can't have any slaughterhouse refuse like that.
No, you're not gonna, if you, what if you don't grind, cook, boil, render, or store slaughterhouse refuse?
That would only be permitted in one area.
Are you gonna kill these animals without storing their waste?
They get stored somewhere.
You'll haul it away, right away. Well, the rendering companies take, take a lot of it away.
Valley protein, there you go.
Mr. Smith. Mr. Smith.
They take it all.
Valley protein.
It's a, it's a big business.
And that's considered recycling, by the way.
I consider recycling.
All right. So, are we okay now?
Will there be a definition or not?
Yes.
Use the state definition. I, I haven't found it in the state code.
Meat food product.
Meat processing slash slaughterhouse.
Right. Three point two dash fifty-four hundred, meat, meat product, meat food product. Means any product capable of use as human food that is made wholly or in part from any meat or other portion of the carcass of any cattle, sheep, swine, or goat, products that contain meat or other portions of such carcasses only in a relatively small proportion, which historically have not been considered by consumers as products in the meat food industry that are exempted from the definition as a meat food product. We don't wanna go down that road.
But meat processing, slaughterhouses are facility that creates what you just read?
Yeah. But you, I think what we wanna do is limit where it goes by the size of the facility. If it's something as small as what, they just process a few deer carcasses and the occasional cow or hog, then that should be allowed on a farm. If it's a large-scale operation, you're gonna have to make, make provisions for that.
I tried that earlier tonight, didn't block.
I guess we can leave it to the common sense of the commissioners and board at the time.
I, you could also just say that are not heavy industrial uses is that are in that section.
I need some consensus of what somebody wants to add.
Ladies and gentlemen, the comprehensive plan encourages the, the, the stability promotion of agricultural products, and, you know, you can raise all the cows and sheep and goats and everything you want, but if you don't have a way to slaughter them, then, you know, it's a waste of time. And if you can slaughter them locally and. And if you can slaughter them locally and, and, uh.
What is it again, 130 point?
If you can slaughter them locally.
3.2, 5400?
3.2. If you can slaughter them locally, it's added value to the farm.
5400?
Yeah, dash 5400, yeah.
While that is true, then we should take out, then we should delete the heavy industrial uses.
Industrial use is completely different. It's not for human consumption for the most part. It's grinding up chicken beaks and feet.
That's a different use.
It's how, it's what to deal with the byproducts of processing meat.
Okay, well, maybe we could, maybe that's where you're.
Just, I think you should just leave the size alone, and you leave it as a SE, as it is, and, and conservation.
They come into the small parcel, and the board is gonna, and you're gonna do two deer a year, the board's gonna say knock yourself out. Come with a small parcel, who's gonna slaughter five thousand houses, they're gonna say, whoa, whoa, whoa.
Yeah, exactly right. You gotta buy some common sense here. Yeah, we used to use a facility that was on a farm over in, um, Page County, and it was an excellent operation. It was small, but they seemed to be able, be able to handle a lot of, you know, local people.
You know, we have one in the county now. It's, it's, I think it's on a hundred acres. It's on a private road. You know, you hear a few comments here and there, but it, it's, they seem to get along with their neighbors now, and everything seems to be okay. If somebody wants to come in and do another one, I think common sense tells you they're probably gonna be on more than 50 acres. And, um.
They're gonna be inspected.
Yeah, it's gonna be a USDA inspect. They gotta have a USDA guy there. You know, 100% of the time when they're, got a knife in their hand. So. Right now.
So let's just go with, so it's gonna be meat processing slash slaughterhouse. See Code of Virginia, 3.2 dash 5400, quote, animal food manufacturer.
Or as amended.
Well, it'll automatically do that. Means any person engaged in the business of preparing animal, including poultry food, derived wholly or in parts from livestock or poultry carcasses, or parts, or products of such carcasses, and all of those things are defined. I'm with you guys. Okay?
Mr. Curry, have you clarified on this? Right, so meat processing slash slaughterhouse. Guess, facility meets the definition of Code of Virginia, Section 3.25400, animal food manufacturer.
Right.
And so if somebody comes in and is going for these things under heavy industrial uses, are you going to deny it?
They can't.
What do you mean they can't?
They're not processing food.
Yes, that was the question.
If they wanna process the food, then they come in and get a special exception permit. For industrial. I mean, that defines. That's not permitted. Animal food manufacturer, defines capable of use as human food, it defines, um.
Now, if the animal food manufacturer comes in and wants to store their byproduct and waste from the process, that's an industrial use.
Right.
We would say, you can do that, but you have to apply for an industrial permit, otherwise you can't do that in your own.
It's not just storage, it's grinding.
Of grinding, grinding of.
Or storage of slaughterhouse refus.
Right. And that would only be permitted in industrial zones.
Or dead animals.
Right, grinding and all that stuff, of slaughterhouse refus.
Grinding of dead animals. That's what it says. I'm just reading the language. I'm not making this up.
Catch it next time around.
Rendering is processed food.
Anyway.
It's a million-dollar question.
You're creating an internal.
Rendering on the street is taking care of the waste products. I think they're gonna catch that when they do the special conditions. Okay? All right. So. Gets us back to where?
170-68, no special conditions. I'll take that, that's right. 170-69. We're now back to, um, the.
69.
I thought we took care of that. We took care of that, we added existing potential, that's. All right, so 170-87.
Wait a minute, what about this to encourage you had? What, in, in B to A of 170 dash 69? You have a note?
It's just different. I had to change the, the lettering wrong.
Okay.
And then there's just pointing out differences between what the board sent in here.
Okay.
170-87. See, type three roads.
70 dash what? 87?
87. The definition for type three roads had a link to Code of Virginia 15.1. Which I sent a separate memo on.
Right. A 15.2 something, right? Well, that, I think the cross-reference to that is supposed to be what's in the subdivision ordinance.
But neither, it's not.
What?
Ultimately, 1, 151466K is a broken reference anyways, that's wrong.
Right, but what you read in your memo is accurate, so I, I'm, I'm on board for that.
So the second page of my memo was in recognition of a suggestion of what you could put instead of the 151 reference.
Yeah.
You know, I need a direction on what needs to be put there, because 151 can't fit.
Well, it should be a reference to type two, that three is the mistake.
No, no, type, there's type one, type two, type three. Type three is for subdivision subdivision. And basically, there are no, um, physical standards. But the 151466K links over to what is now 15.22244A, which talks about, and it's odd wording for the Code of Virginia, that in any county, a subdivision ordinance shall provide for reasonable provisions permitting a subdivision of a lot of parcels of the purpose set up to give to a member of the community, family members, or the property owner, including a family member, spouse, subject only to an express requirement contained in the Code of Virginia, and any requirement imposed by the local government that all lots of less than five acres have reasonable right-of-way to not less than 10 feet or more than 20 feet, providing ingress acres. So the right-of-way can't be less than 10 or more than 20. Wider than maximum, who knows? So that's in the Code of Virginia, and that's a shout.
That's from the family division. So, so what are you proposing?
151466K is not a valid reference. What do you want in that spot? I gave you a memo with all one's information. This is what you taped over and cut me off for the.
I thought you did have a proposed solution. I'm gonna do it. What? Well, what you proposed, that's what I'm saying, is good.
I'm supposed to make a link back over to subdivisions, ordinance, and the state in the Code of Virginia.
I agree.
Oh, good. So, well, here's, I wrote, the type three private streets shall be located within the right-of-way as required in Section 147-631D.
147 dash what?
147-36.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Thirty, thirty?
Wait, 170-7.
It's in the subdivision, thirty.
170-36, B.
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 B1B.
So the section says five.
Not less than 10 feet nor more than 20 feet to a dedicated record street. Yeah, great.
And 15 to 2244A in the Code of Virginia 15.58.
Right.
It's okay?
Yes.
Everybody else? And this only applies to family divisions?
Right.
The type three road only applies to family divisions. Type two roads are the kind of big ass standard.
Right.
And the type one is full of, of subdivision.
It requires a wider wide right-of-way. It's gotta be 12-foot. The built, the constructed road has to be 12-feet.
So a family right-of-way can't, the way we're doing it, can be no wider than 20 feet? It's a very odd code section in the Code of Virginia. So if an applicant comes in, a family division with a 50-foot right-of-way, we can't, we can't approve that?
That's in the Code. That's what the Code of Virginia says.
Yes.
Yes.
Can approve it, right.
Correct. They must've done that one night when they came back from the bar.
It's probably something that was put in there by the, you know, the housing law, we need to keep the prevailing real subdivision. The double-wide industry? And so you can, or maybe that.
Yeah.
That if they keep them limited, then you can actually make a real.
So you can, or turn it into a real.
Competition with subdivision. Now, it's not the right-of-way, at least for the most part. But it's Code of Virginia, it's your.
Is that, that we can't require any larger than that, or there can't be any larger than that?
No, that, that technically, our family division section, if we're gonna allow people to do a family division and get out of our subdivision rules, we have to follow this provision.
What, what is that one again? It's 15.2?
2244A.
2244A? 15. Dash 44, one, what?
Two, two, four, one.
2244.
Well, what, that's what you have to do.
It's very strange. Well, it is what it is, boys. Let's move on. And girls.
Shall provide, da-da-da-da-da, da-da-da-da-da, that's what it says. Uh, any requirement posed by the local government that all lots less than five acres shall have a reasonable right-of-way of not less than 10 feet nor more than 20 feet, providing ingress and egress. Right?
The summers, myself and Mr. Goff sat down and went through this and traced it.
Just, you know, it's like.
Art and I went to the clover's basement, found the old Code, Code of those. And went through this and traced it back and.
Well, so in a way, if you've got 20 feet, but you happen to have more land on either side of it, then that's just not part of your right-of-way, that's all.
But there's some buyer beware thing.
You have what you need to get it squared.
Yes, look, if you are, okay, we're, we're.
Yeah, okay, let's move. Let's move, right. I think we're almost done.
We're ready.
Enforcement. 170 dash 25.
This is a suggestion I made to you and to the board, so that, um.
Instead of the chairman, the zoning, the county administrator? Don't you have to disqualify yourself?
Well, before the zoning administrator was a county administrator, so if the zoning administrator was on leave, then, then he would, somebody would be the zoning administrator.
Right.
Well, this would, would allow that to be leave. Now, I did say that it may make sense to add in what if we're both not there?
Then it should be the chairman of the planning commission. That's easy. Provided, however, that the chairman is a former zoning administrator.
So, I mean, you can.
Or just put, any, put, any, the resident of the county that is a former zoning administrator.
I think that's fine.
I like what's there. I like what you did.
I think two layers is fine.
Yeah.
People keep using that, what if someone gets hit by a bus? But there are no buses in the county.
I think you get hit by a bus in another county.
Well, we stay like.
170-129. I just wanna point out that I changed the word right before the pink. To authorize, it says require.
Yeah.
You are not required to determine that all delinquent real estate taxes are paid. The 1522286B allows us to make sure that they're going to, and not do it, but it doesn't tell us we have to.
Oh. Okay, fine. All right. So, somebody wanna make a motion now to advertise? No, we have to go over the ad still?
Let's just make sure there aren't any questions on the.
On what? That?
The ad.
The ad? I don't.
I like it.
What's this need to fix conflict with rows for person? Do we did that, didn't we?
That's, uh, we, we had.
We, oh, in the 168, category seven, addition of additional standards, we have to put in that, and definition. We have to somehow put that definition that we just did.
Meat processing, right?
Definitions in the, up in the top, addition of definition for meat processing slash slaughterhouse has to go in 170-8, the four, a new fourth bullet.
Yeah.
Right?
Right.
Okay.
Uh, so the addition uses a spa, that is correct.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we should note a, um. Okay, help. Needs, should say that the definition for boarding house. Would. Any use.
Well, doesn't it capture, but just an amendment to the definitions?
Good. 170-65, that would be changed to align with the, the health code. You know? 170-68, that would just come out, because we didn't add any special conditions.
Right.
Just addressed ones.
So that pink part comes out?
Yep.
Okay.
170-125, and we're good. We've got the definition for meat processing, slaughterhouse, going, and accessories that are in there. That's in there, remove the definition for boarding house, and the use of the boarding house.
All right. We ready for our motion to approve?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
The ad to authorize the zoning administrator and county administrator to run the ad, set this for a public hearing at the elementary school at our next regular meeting, as we have amended it tonight. Is that the motion? You seconding it, Mr. Kohler?
I'll second it.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose say no.
I'm gonna say no, and I just wanna clarify very quickly why, which is, I think most of this in here is just fine and shows a lot of good work. I'm concerned that we've got, we haven't done enough to do on transit lodging, and also I feel like we haven't come up with the kind of definition we need to deal with some, with some people meat processing. So for those two reasons, I.
So you don't even wanna take it to a public hearing on the count of that?
I don't think they should do.
Okay.
I don't think they should do that, but, so unfortunately, I'll have to vote no, but.
Okay. So it's six to one. All right, the next item on our agenda is our work plan. Which, uh, I'm scheduling our next work session. In light of the upcoming holidays and so forth and so on. I guess the things that aren't done, and I think the next thing to do on our work plan is work on the sign ordinance. So, um.
Well, I'll have to bring that up at our next board meeting, and we've got to have both Mr. Curry and the county attorney at that first meeting that the planning commission's gonna take up. Sign ordinance, because everybody needs to start on the same page.
Mm-hmm.
No ideas that are different, no feelings. We're looking at the code. We're looking at what the.
And the, and the case law.
The case law.
Okay.
So what, when, we bring that up, that, you give me a date or set of dates or something?
Well, our, our, our next meeting is December the, what, 16th?
16th.
16th.
So we want the county attorney there?
Well, we're, no, the 16th, we're gonna have three public hearings. That's, that's, don't we have to vote that? Have this, do we already do that?
So it'll be the first day or sign ordinance.
Do we do that?
But the, at your joint meeting, there was consensus among the two bodies to do it.
Okay, so, but we have to vote to advertise that, right?
We can.
Okay.
We're doing it.
What?
We're, we're doing it. We're advertising.
We're advertising.
Yeah, it's sent to the paper.
Okay, so. Okay, so can we have a motion to, to have that public hearing for the amendment to the floodplain maps?
For the.
Hmm?
Floodplain.
Floodplain amendments and the maps, so.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Light, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. The ayes have it, it's unanimous. All right, and then, so we've got three public hearings at our regular meeting.
So you wanna work session between now and?
No, I don't, I don't know. If you want to, I don't know what, much we're gonna get accomplished.
We could, we could look at the sign ordinance, but, but we have to have the county attorney there, and I think Mr. Curry also.
When are we gonna have this meeting?
Everybody starts on the same page.
7.5 is free.
Yeah, right. Now, I'm going off.
This room is free.
Well.
Maybe we ought not to schedule that.
I, I think unfortunately, it's gonna roll over till next year.
Well, we can, we can have, we can start a work session on it, so that the planning commission.
Well, Mr. Kohler had prepared some draft, like, I don't know, about a year and a half or two years ago. Do you wanna, do you have that? Can you circulate? Your, your draft that you did.
The sign ordinance?
Yeah.
I'll go date up. Yeah, I'd look at it quite a lot.
I'm sure you haven't. All right, well, why, well, okay, so that, the first question is, so you can get that to me. You can get that to me and I'll circulate it, but the question is, do you wanna have a, a work session on that between now and December 16th?
Well, let me just say about it, that there's, um, I mean, there's significant areas in there that I couldn't do, because they took, they would take the commission deciding what direction they wanna go in on certain things. So there are several.
When you circulate, why don't you highlight what those, just give me a list, like bullets?
I don't remember what they are.
Well, okay, well, look at it and then see if you can do that. The question is, are we gonna have a work session between now and December 16th? And if so, when?
I think that's putting in the holiday a lot, and we've got each year, and we've got November 16th.
We've got a full platter of things to do. We've got.
We were never gonna work on anything that's on the agenda for the public hearing until that night, right?
By the time we get done with three public hearings, I think everybody's gonna be ready to go home.
Home together.
And start wrapping their Christmas presents.
And I think too, Mr. Koenig, there's a group of people that would rather not have any more input than you in your 2020.
Well, there's a group of people that maybe they would wanna have my input before I'm going, so.
I think that would be good.
Well, that's been out of my control. The, what's, I am, I'm waiting for somebody to make a motion. Do you wanna have a work session between now and the 16th on the sign ordinance?
I think, I think the month of December is, is, is a very short month, and.
It's 31 days. It's one of the longest months of the year.
We only have proposed one more meeting with you, Mr. Koenig. I would love to have two more meetings with you. And just savor the time before you turn this up.
Thank you.
I think we should have a, a meeting between, between now and the 16th.
All right, when? What day?
Whenever you're not fishing.
I ain't fishing. My boat's out of the water.
Okay.
Sitting in my next door neighbor's driveway, it's about the 9th to 14th. Wednesday, 9th, Monday, the 14th. Sometime before then. You won't be there, I'll be there.
So later, we go to work, it's gotta be, you're gonna have the sign ordinance and New Year's.
Well, there's also this thing about the public art. Is that in our bailiwick, Mr. Curry? I mean.
Yes.
What?
Yes.
I mean, is that a zoning issue?
That's part of it.
All right. Well, that's what it would be on, the public art thing and the, um,
Sign ordinance.
And the sign ordinance. We'll start discussing. It's been proposed Monday, the 14th. Now, but I know there's court that day, circuit court, but. I'm sure they'll be out of here by 6 o'clock. We're 7 o'clock. Let's, I mean, I just didn't have it at 7 o'clock.
Let's, if it's 7, then I'll, I'll.
7?
In time to board, we need the county attorney here.
Okay.
What time we're talking about?
7.
7.
December the 14th. And that's gonna be a work session, so we'll have to get a, a notice out. Ms. Lee won't have to be there. All right, is that a motion? As a second to Mr. Fraser's motion?
Second.
Any further discussion? I just wanna note that we've had more meetings of the planning commission this year, even without taking into account that. And I think the planning commission has had in the last two or three years combined. And the other thing, except for when we had the COVID business, we've had perfect attendance, except for the one meeting, even one person was absent. So, I wanna commend you all. And I'll probably say it again, but it's been a real privilege to serve and me personally, a great honor. And I appreciate everyone's cooperation throughout the year.
We didn't cooperate with you at all.
Well, that's a form of cooperation. Maybe I was a candidate.
Or we were tied.
Operating with each other. Against me.
So we're gonna vote now?
To have the work session? Yeah, we're gonna vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We adjourn or we, uh, just?
No, we're gonna adjourn, because otherwise Marlena Lee, she'll have to come and cover it. It's just gonna be a work session. All right, any further business before we adjourn? Hearing none, the motion is made and seconded. All in favor of adjourning, say aye.
All right.
Oppose, say no. The ayes have it. Thank you all for coming, Mr. Curry. Especially thank you. Luke, thank you.